Very good, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I've got 6:38. I thank you all for coming, both those in person and through the internet. And I'd like to start the meeting. I ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, I'd like to welcome our sister town, Willington's Board of Selectmen here.
Thank you for having us. Welcome. Thank you.
One of the nice things about working with the neighbors is we share a lot of things together. And I know Erica's boards and boards before mine, and I've done this for a number of years. And it's a pleasure having you here. Our board, the Board of Selectmen from Ashford here, Catherine Silver Smith, Roger Phillips, and Bill Faletti for Selectmen. Erica?
Erica Waschinsky for Selectmen in Willington. And online with us, we have Selectman Jim Bullock and Selectwoman Liza Boras. Thank you both for joining us.
Absolutely. Would you be so kind to read the notice of the meeting?
Yes. Legal notice, Special Selectmen's Meetings, Willington Ashford Community Public Hearing, Thursday, September 8, 2022, 6:30 PM. Residents of the Town of Willington and Ashford are hereby notified and warned that a public informational hearing will be held on Thursday, September 8, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the Town of Ashford Municipal Offices Lower Level Meeting Room, in person, virtually via Zoom, and in hybrid format. The public informational hearing will be for the purpose of hearing and receiving input on possible uses of the Cattle Rock property, which came into the possession of the towns of Ashford and Willington in November of 2021 through the tax sale process. William Faletti, Roger Phillips, Catherine Silver Smith, Erica Waschinsky, Eliza Boras, Jim Bullock.
Thank you, Erica. As you probably heard with the reading of the notice, this is a public hearing. And our boards are in union with, at this point, we're going to be taking your input, those of you who are here in person, of course, those of you who are on Zoom. There'll be no votes taken tonight by either of our boards. We are scheduling a future, really soon, Selectmen's meeting combined, that we will be sharing our impression of what we're hearing tonight and hopefully drawing some conclusions. The idea of this is we've got, and one of the reasons that prompted us doing this, as well as wanting to hear from you folks in general anyway, is that we've got a next round of grants coming up, Brownfield's Grants, and they're due the end of this month. And we intend on making some of the comments that we hear from everybody and the conclusions that the Boards of Selectmen reach in that application. So that's where we're going to go. Just a couple of quick ground rules. To start with, we're going to allow three minutes for individuals to speak to the boards. Anybody in this room, we'd ask to come up to the podium, identify yourselves, give us your street, we don't need your number, and also the town that you're from. Just so, this meeting is being recorded, and it'd be a lot easier to refer to whatever comments are if we know who you are. Erica, anything else?
Sure. So just for information's sake, the microphone that will help folks online to hear us here in the room is here on the table. So when you're at the podium, I encourage you to, you know, help your voice to carry a bit. If you can't hear us online, give a wave, then we'll see if we can't address it. If people want to speak online, I encourage you to utilize the hand raise feature under Reactions. Or if you're on the screen, kind of give us a wave. We do have someone monitoring that so that we can make sure that we hear from everyone.
Okay, anybody have any questions that are here? No? I'm going to take this opportunity to introduce Sam Hader of BL Companies. Sam, if you'd introduce yourself and your cohorts here that have been working with you on this project. What we're going to do besides the public hearing, we wanted to give you just a very brief overview of our technical people that have been working on this for several years now. Introduce them to you, give them an opportunity. And also we'll hear from our legal counsel, who's also been working in conjunction with BL Companies and also with EPA and DEEP, whoever else needs to get their ear. So Sam, do you want to take it from there and just give us a brief overview from your side?
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. First of all, you can hear me, correct? Thumbs up, somebody? Great, okay. I am a licensed environmental professional. I'm a principal at BL Companies. And BL Companies was hired back in, I want to say, 2018 to perform additional investigation of the environmental conditions at the Cattle Rock properties. That work was funded with a previous DECD municipal assessment grant that the towns of Ashford and Willington were awarded. And as part of that work, we conducted various phases of environmental investigation. And I will take, I will provide a high-level overview of those in just a minute. Also, as part of our team, we had Val Pharo. We have Val Pharo on our team, and she's with you in the room tonight. I unfortunately have a seven o'clock, a conflict at seven o'clock, and I have a hard stop, so I'm going to provide my overview, and then I will have to scoot out. But Val's role as a planner was to assist us with evaluating the conditions of the property that we identified and to help evaluate potential uses of the property for the future. And Val can speak more specifically about exactly what her role was. So with our work that we did under the previous grant, we held two public forums. The first was after we completed a Phase 1 environmental site assessment to talk about our findings at that time. And the second was after we had completed what we call a Phase 2 site investigation, where we went out and collected soil and groundwater samples. So I'm going to provide a high-level overview, a more detailed overview of that work that we did should be available via a PowerPoint that we prepared and presented to the public back in, I believe it was the end of 2020. So, but if I could, I'm going to share my screen here. And can you all see that slide?
Yes.
Okay. So just to give you an overview, there has been environmental investigation and remediation at the Cattle Rock properties beginning back in 1992. There have been several phases of environmental investigation, the earliest starting in 92, but throughout the 90s, substantial amount of investigation in the mid-2000s when EPA got involved. There was a subsequent investigation that was done, but it was sort of overseen by DEP in 2013. And then our investigation that was done in 2020. So there has been lots of work that has been done there. There's also been several phases of environmental remediation. There was some work done in 99, but the majority of the work was done in 2007 and 2008. And again, that work was done under the direction of EPA. And there, they hired contractors to perform that work. Key findings of the work that's been done to date is that there has been no impact to surrounding drinking water wells based on testing that was done in 92, 2007, and again in 2008. During the remediation work that was done in 2007 and 2008, there was over 5,000 tons of contaminated soil removed from the property and over 200 tons of solid waste. So that's very important to remember that, that there was a tremendous amount of work done early on. When we got involved and began our work in 2018, we saw no obvious signs of releases or environmental degradation on the property other than some various small areas where there were some metal pipe or some other solid waste, but no stress vegetation, no obvious contamination, things of that nature. Our work, which involved extensive sampling of soil, groundwater, and sediment and surface water, identified no contaminants in onsite groundwater or surface water. We did identify some regulated compounds just slightly above Connecticut DEEP action levels in only three soil samples and one sediment sample. So those were very positive findings. And we, since doing that testing, we have prepared a remedial action plan which could be used as the basis for implementing remediation that calls for excavation and off-site disposal of those three areas of soil and the one area of sediment that are slightly above standards, as well as removal of any remaining surface trash. And again, there's not a tremendous amount, but there are some areas where there's some old culverts and some other areas where solid waste and debris is present. So that's the high-level overview. And as I said, there is more detail about what we did and where we tested in that 2020 PowerPoint presentation. And I think, given that high-level overview, from my perspective, the focus of this site, now we need to complete the remediation, and that's hopefully the purpose of the grant. But the focus can now move from investigation and remediation to determining what the future use of the property will be. There really is no restriction to use of the property based on the findings that we have. And our remedial plan will not require any restrictions for any type of use. And once those soils and sediments are removed, I will produce, hopefully I will produce, or an LEP will produce a, what's called a verification report, which will indicate that the site is in compliance with Connecticut's remediation standard regulations and that no further action is required. So that's my overview. With that, I will turn it back to the Selectmen to, I think, move into the more important component for this discussion, which is potential future uses.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Val, we're going to turn the floor over to you for the presentation.
If you would like. Sure. We'll give, I'll use my slides. I'm Val Pharo, Litter's Advisors, and I've been on Sam's team for, seems like forever, Sam. When we originally negotiated the scope with the town, we were thinking, okay, we've got to dig into this investigation. We have to understand, you know, what is going on out there, is it clean, is it not clean? We went through that. As we were finishing that, we had discussions with the Selectmen and the folks who basically were coming to our meetings. Do we continue to move forward, or what do we need to do? Or we really looked to Anne to give us some guidance. And we knew that we really had some things to take care of first, which Anne can talk about later. Yes.
Can we check to make sure that everybody on the web is able to hear? Kelsey?
From this distance?
Liza or Jim, can you tell us if you can hear us in the room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You can go through the participants tab to make sure. Just ask everyone. At this point, Kelsey would uncheck mute themselves. Unmute themselves. If you go down.
Just click on the presentation.
This is where we go. Sorry, we muted everyone to show that we did have a problem with that kind of feedback. All right, Kelsey, go just close that.
Thank you, Val. Sorry, just a moment.
So very briefly, what we did was, we didn't really embark on a market study or what we call a development piece of stuff, because we weren't quite sure what was going to happen on the legal side. And that turned out to be a good decision, because if we had gone and looked into things and decided certain things, well, what has happened? Three years have passed. And in terms of market and demand, that's like an attorney. Okay? So we're glad, hey, I would have loved to work on this and say, this is what we could have done, but I couldn't really stand up before you tonight and say, geez, what I did in 2019 or whatever was valid, because the reason, because the market has changed, as you all know. You don't need to tell that. So when we're doing redevelopment, you know, I often use this graphic. It shows you how, you know, multi-tenantity does it. Tentacles everywhere. How do you deal with this? You know, we've got all these aspects. So it's not just about dirt. It's not just about contamination. There's other things you have to worry about. Anne is here. She'll tell you about the legal burdens, and that's been a big deal. But there are other things that I did start looking at while we were doing the investigations. Land use and topo, just general stats. I also started going out to the market. I kind of worked my contacts. I talked to developers, even talked to other municipalities to see what was going on. And, you know, by and large, we figured that what's going to happen out there is going to be relocated because of where it's located on an access point, which is not exactly a highway. It's near a small town. It's very picturesque. There's a lot of wetlands, there's topos, all sorts of things. So it's not a flat site. So number one is, all right, that physical challenge. So as you go through this, you understand, as you look at the developability, you look at the physical aspects as well as the market aspects. And there's various ways to do that. You turn it into, you know, an analysis of market using data. You can go to a broker. There's obviously a lot of ways to do that. In the end of the day, all of these little circles have to be marked. And obviously, at the top is a lead role. Who's going to take, you know, who's going to take the leadership? And at the bottom of that is an implication. You want to have something done. Next slide. So one of the things that might be helpful is to do a bona fide development piece of stuff, where there would be mapping, we'd apply wetlands and topo, and look at what physically could lay out there. What we don't look at right away is to zone, because we want to change the zone. That you folks, we're going to hear from you folks, we might want to change that. Okay? So I don't know if you can read all that, but basically, there's a physical assessment we do, and then development considerations we're applying. And in the end, you folks in town decide what's going to happen. So it's a little bit more of an information and data gathering process that marries with the environment. And then that, the third column, that is what Anne agreed to take in terms of legal and what we have to do to move this along. So if you have questions, we can talk about that later. That's basically, you know, where we live.
Okay. So if you could, that's all great. We can hear you fine, but we're getting some folks saying they can't quite hear. So sometimes we need to turn around the room. There are some drawbacks to hybrid.
So when they start speaking, we should probably move this forward.
Or speak this way. I think that's where it turns. Yeah.
So turn your back.
A little sideways. But we can turn, that's what they're facing. I'm finding it hard.
Yeah.
Okay, let me just say a few words then about where we are from a legal perspective, because I do want to make sure that there's a few minutes for Sam in case anyone has questions for him, but he may be gone already. So I'll try to handle it. Bottom line is, as everyone knows, the site's been a bit of an illegal state of flux, a bit of embrolio with the property owners for decades. And that has resolved itself. The town court closed on the properties, and we ended up entering into an agreement where the town is ordered and approved by the court. We now own the properties. And that is a huge milestone, because now we can control these properties' fate. And we own, the towns collectively own all of them. So that, coupled with all the good work that Sam has done, where we know what level of contamination exists today on the property, which that needs to be remediated, isn't much, which is good news. We've done an awful lot of work. Isn't much left to remain in looking to apply for the last bit of grants. But the Department of Environmental and Community Development, ENDEEP, who provide the grants, will be looking for what's the use? What are you going to do with this town? And it runs the spectrum of public use, community use, private use, housing, retail, residential, commercial. So we're at the beginning stages of, what are we going to do with the property? What is it? The impediment that we've heard for years, which is true, are the liens that EPA and DEP have on the property. EPA went in decades ago, cleaned it up, put liens on the property. I'm working with EPA and the Department of Justice right now on an agreement with them in order to get the liens released. It becomes a function of what's going to happen to the properties. Is it going to be a public use? Is it going to be a private use? There's a lot of questions and factors that they're raising, and they want to be fair with us. They're not going to say, oh, no, you're going to have to pay us the four, I can't see without these, $4.3 million. They're not saying that at all. And DEP, theirs is a lot less, and we'll get through the process with DEEP. We'll get the orders released so that in the event we look to convey the property to a private developer, we'll be able to move through the process more on a streamlined basis like any normal real estate transaction. So we're in a really good place right now so that we can really and meaningfully ask you all and have the Selectmen consider, what are the towns going to do with these properties? So that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you very much, Sam, Val, and we appreciate it. And we know we put you under a bit of a burden, because you've been doing years of due diligence on this whole project, and we asked you to condense into a few minutes of discussion. But are there any questions that anybody have of what you've heard so far, either here or on the web?
I think we should go right into public comment.
Sounds good. We're going to open the floor then for public comment. And again, we would ask you, if you're speaking as an individual at this point, try to limit it to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a committee or department or group of people, it'll be five minutes. And we'll be a little flexible on that, but not much, at least for the first round. Anybody here?
At least one Selectman. Two Liza, well, has her, Liza has her hand raised.
Hi.
Hi, yes. My quick question. So I know that there's been a lot of remediation already done, and the groundwater looks good, and the, you know, all of that looks fine right now. Legal question, if there are issues in the future with any groundwater that does emerge as being problematic, is there, is there any, A, is there any potential of that? And B, if there is, what's the liability of the town? Should we have sold it to like a private developer or houses have been built on the property?
To our question, first is, the groundwater has been tested over the years quite a bit, and it's fully compliant with the criteria according to SAM. So if it appears as if there are groundwater issues, it's because something's going on out there today, and the town owns the property today. So it would be the town's responsibility and liability to deal with any releases that may occur today. There's no reason to believe there are any releases, but it would all be on the town. I don't think, contamination like this, given all the work that's been done, isn't latent, because we have soil as well as extensive soil sediment, extensive groundwater testing. So it's not as if we know that, well, we still have a packet of something, a pocket of something in the soil that's going to one day enter the groundwater. We don't have that. We know, Sam knows that where those areas are, what limitations are left, and it's very manageable and small. So we don't foresee any groundwater issues going forward based upon the historical contamination. So the town's liability and responsibility would largely be very limited to whatever the towns would cause today.
I see Loretta there. Loretta, you've got your hand up?
Let me just remind folks to identify themselves for the record.
Yes. Loretta, if you'd identify yourself with your street and town.
Certainly. Loretta Robel. Loretta Robel, Pumpkin Hill Road. I'm the Chair of the Ashford Conservation Commission. And we have a proposal of using the land as a public use land. And we have created this proposal while understanding what the dynamics are of the land and what the contours are, being that there's a lot of wetlands and a lot of water on this property, a lot of steep slopes. So what we are looking at, what we are thinking about, what is the best use for the town and also for all the residents? So we came up with some, what we consider as good suggestions about how everyone can benefit from this, again, based on the nature of the land right now presently. So we've come up with both long-term and short-term use. The short-term use, we see, it would be for residents to use this diverse natural area for passive recreation and education. There's also part of the Nip Mud Trail, which is mostly in the Willington section. And the Knit Book Trail could be greatly enhanced and improved on that. And we, as the Conservation Commission, have always worked with the Willington Conservation. Particularly in the past, we worked on Langheimer, creating trails together. And so we have a history with that. And then the third thing that we would be interested in is to look at somehow creating a resource center for the property, where people could come and look at what the property is like and we could provide them with some education about the natural setting. It could also be a place for demo projects and a lot of initiatives, such as demonstration projects, like plantings for native flora, pollinator gardens. We could also do natural wildlife habitat education and pollinator gardens. And this would also give people a chance to see how they themselves could enhance their garden areas or their particular property owns that they have. The other thing that we felt could be used there is to have community gardens, about both veggies and flower gardens. And this could be used also as models, but also for people who don't have appropriate garden space in their particular dwelling. The other big thing that we thought about is that to use it with the passive recreation, this would include walking, hiking, dog walking, running, nature walks, plant identification, horseback riding, snow shoeing, cross-country skiing, and other kinds of passive recreation. The other thing that we thought was really important, this is a very large piece of property. It has a lot of potential on it. So we felt it would be a good idea to develop a resource, a study group, to look at this. And the study group containing a lot of residents who are interested in how this space can be used and to talk about and look at the long-term use. What we are suggesting, short-term, would not in any way create a problem for anything that comes in the future, because it's minimal impact on the present land. And also, it's something that doesn't cost a lot of money. We have contacted Yale Forest, and the director there, Mike Ashton, is willing to do a forest management plan for us in the fall of 2023. And this is something that's positive, because what we're proposing would open it up to all residents in the town and give everyone a chance to enjoy this beautiful piece of property. So I will now turn it over. I think Steve is here, who is also part of our So I will now turn it over. I think Steve um is here, who is also part of our Conservation Commission. He can just go over briefly some of the reasons why we're talking about how to best use this property. Thank you.
Uh good evening. Um I'm hoping I can share my screen. Here we go. Okay, um so we, as part of the uh this this information is on a website. It's it's up at the top here. Um sorry for the busyness of my screen, but um we defined of some of the physical characteristics of the Kittle Rock properties and and there's a narrative uh in our document that discusses that. Um it may be easier to show you um various um maps and and uh extractions from Google Earth that that described the property fairly well. If you look at it, um you would think it's, you know, a wooded property, but um as Loretta mentioned, there are considerable wetlands on this property and and uh I, if you can see my my screen, uh I'm gonna go over some of the bigger wetland areas that that you can find here. This is a a pretty large wetland here. There's one there. There's one here. There's a pond right there. This is Maritz Pond and the surrounding area is quite extensive uh and very wet. In here, it's it's wet. There's more wet back here. There's a brook. You can almost see the uh the outline of the brook uh comes from the the high ground. Up here is is the highlands. These are highlands. And and this is higher elevation than um than Maritz, which is lowest lowest elevation area. Uh this is essentially a bowl that that you see um. I have a 3D um Google Earth photo. It may be a little difficult to tell in, um but if you visit the website, um you can see it better. But essentially, everything drains this way and this way. And and these wetlands are all interconnected by little streams that eventually flow into Maritz Pond and on to um the Mount Hope River eventually. Um you can also see that there are residences here, 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 and here. Uh and then, of course, everything along uh Giant Oak Lane and some on uh Kerosi Road. Uh the purple here are stone walls that can be found. They're predominantly in the northwest part of the property. Tried to outline the all the the wetlands. There's, I think, 41 acres of wetlands. There's 20 acres, almost 20 acres of um what I'll call fields. Um these were, these two I know were formerly cultivated. Um I'm not so sure about about these. Um also noticed that this could, this field is actually part of this property. Uh I don't know if that's an issue. Um this is the uh Google Earth uh 3D view. Again, I think you maybe need to visit the website and study it in detail. You can blow things up uh and and see things, but um so much of this information comes from from Google Earth and from from NICAG. NICAG, um it's uh maybe somebody can help me out. It's the Northeast Council of uh Governments. Yeah, Council of Governments and they they offer GIS services that that show various, you can overlay uh many different features onto parcels. And uh it can be, it can be used to to uh show anything, uh wetlands, farmland soils, uh various uh town uh buildings, parcels, all all that. Um here's a a photo of the parcel with a a red outline of the property. You can see a small pond here. This is a field that's opposite Howard Road, another field. These fields over here are along the um mostly, they're mostly in Wellington. They're right along the town line, which runs about like that. Uh the Nipmuck Trail comes in from Marsh Road over here, follows uh the the property a bit on the, right along the northern border and then exits um on the north side. Uh once again, here's a, here's a wetland. And let me go to the next one. Um here's a oh, I'm sorry. Here it is. This is uh another photo uh showing that this is looking east, kind of northeast, uh Maritz Pond. Another substantial marshy area, uh one acre pond. The fields again, you can see a ridge line here. It drains, you know, everything goes downhill along here. These uh red outlines here are uh property lots, private owners. Uh this is Route 44 in here. Let's see, uh another view, this is the the wetlands looking west toward the um the town line, the uh Ashford, Wellington town line. One more view, same, essentially the same thing, but looking more north. Uh this is Maritz Pond. It's a, it's a shallow pond. It has lots of shrubbery and low growth uh in it. And this is a, uh Loretta talked about um community gardens. Uh we thought we'd throw in a picture of uh the Mansfield Community Gardens, which are, have been established for oh, 20, 30 years. And they have some pretty cool uh service services there. They do have water. They have a little building. You can do some really interesting things because this parcel could support that. Um it's it's quite large.
Can we just ask you to kind of come to a conclusion?
I'm sorry. I thought the physical but I tend to to wander on, but I am, I'm essentially done unless someone has questions.
Steve, if you could put um the website in in the chat box, people could then see it and go to it.
Absolutely. That's a great idea, Loretta. Sure. I'll add that there.
Okay.
All right, uh is there anyone in the room?
Welcome.
Wanted to speak?
I'm at Taman, uh Lisa Lane in Wellington. Uh I'm very familiar with this property. I represented Kittle Rock for the last 20 years in connection with, but that's not why I'm here. Uh I've hunted this property for the last 20 years, more than that, almost 25. I'm very familiar with every square inch of this property. I've walked it extensively. And I think all these ideas regarding passive recreation are are excellent. I'm not gonna speak to what you may wanna do long-term because that's beyond the scope of, you know, who knows, that property. Um I've been in court over this property uh with an appraiser uh who said there's very, there's not a lot you can do with it. It's that has little access to the high rate. And um it's not good for shopping centers. There's a lot of things they they testified wasn't good good for, but I think um I'd like the towns to consider allowing hunting on it. Um primarily, when I'm speaking of, today, most people only hunt, do deer hunting. And um it it does, it does tell very well with um all these passive uses. Um it would not interfere with the gardens. The deer hunting seasons all of ru- for rifle is three weeks long. And uh it's in November, uh past the growing season. And um and I've seen hunters there over the years, over the last, you know, as I said, close to 25 years. Everyone's very respectful to each other. Um there's never been any problems. And hunting is a valid form of recreation. Uh it it beats sitting around staring at a TV all day or all, you know, every day. And it gets a lot of people up and out of the house. And uh there's never been any problems. I, you know, there's um and I would just, I think at most, I think anyone who would wanna use that property would be more than happy to sign a liability waiver. Uh and I don't think, I think, and I didn't look, but I think on the state law, you may be, at least, I know private landowners are protected. There's a statute that protects a private landowner from any liability if they allow a hunter on the property. Um and I don't know if that applies to municipality, but I don't think that's a problem. You know, I mean, it was, uh so I think anyone would be willing to sign, uh who wanted to hunt, they'd be willing to sign a liability waiver. And I'm just thinking in the short term, and even as early as this year or, you know, because the hunting season starts another couple of months. And I know there's, there's bow that starts probably in September, October, and then it follows into the rifle. And then after that, the last few weeks of the year, in December, there's what's called black powder hunting. I've never seen anyone out there hunting black powder before, so there's not in the property, there are no shortage of deer in this part of the state. There are as many deer as there are squirrels. And the problem is they like to eat, you know, people's uh bushes and shrubs and flowers. And it's it's uh and you know, hunting is supported by DEEP. And uh and it's um it's an important part of conservation, it's for managing the herd is important. And I think it's something the town should seriously consider. And I would just ask that you do that. And uh I'm glad to see that, you know, you're having this meeting and um hope there's no hard feelings. I was just doing my job and um and I wish you, I wish y'all well. I'd like, I'm very interested to see what you would do. I'd seriously like you to consider it. And I thank you for your, for your thoughts on that.
Is it John?
John.
Should be able to unmute yourself, John.
Yes. Yeah, um.
You, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, John, John Seville, and it's Perry Hill Road. Um I think that one use for some of this land, and it would be a a really a fairly small fraction of the land, would be for solar. We wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense to clear any forest land for solar. Um I don't know about the wetland areas. Um the the cleared areas are already might be appropriate. But there are two or three options for solar. One is is uh it's a new state program, uh shared, shared solar. It's actually shared clean energy is the the name of the new state program. And it is set up to allow people of low or moderate income to be able to get a subscription to buy power from a community system uh for for uh people of lower moderate income and also municipalities. So it's 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 managed by um EverSource. And um it it would be a way of sharing some of this land and the benefits of it and the lower electric bills, which I think would be really important with residents of the two towns. There are also uh two other possibilities that I can think of. One is virtual net metering, which uh Coventry is involved in. Um it's it's having its difficulties. But i- it's a system whereby the output from the array um can be used to offset the electric bill of the the town. So we've already generating quite a bit of our own power, especially at the senior center. But uh in addition to that, um and as we move more and more toward using electricity to heat our facilities and get away from oil, it would give us an option to really reduce our energy bills. And I think it would be a very productive use for some of that property. And finally, if all else fails, um there are commercial installers really hungry for sites that are appropriate. And I can't say that this is one of those. Now, I don't know uh about the access to to utilities and all of that. But I guess bottom line is, I I hope that we can consider um putting solar on on a, on at least a fraction of this land. I think it would benefit all of us in the two towns.
Thank you very much.
Go back to the room. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak?
Hello, my name is Jessica Miller, Temple Lady in Ashford. I am the Executive Director for the Ashford Housing Authority. And we recently created a nonprofit affiliate um named the Ashford Housing Development Corporation. Um our mission will be to expand affordable housing in Ashford. And um so within the next, you know, few years, we will be looking for a location in Ashford. And ideally, it would be town property. We're looking to build affordable housing specifically for seniors and disabled. And it would be with low to moderate income. So the low income is key. We really have no senior housing for low-income individuals. And um that's something that I really wanna bridge that gap uh within the next few years, so um you know, I don't have any proposals or anything like that, but I just wanted to throw it out there. We will be looking, so possibly this could be an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, Christine, you should be able to unmute yourself. We promise we see all your hands, so we'll see you again. Keep it, John.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um I just want to mention a couple of things from
Identify yourself for the record.
Sorry, Christina Sebo, Perry Hill Road. I'm also part of the uh Conservation Commission. I'd just like to um emphasize one thing that hasn't been mentioned from the uh Conservation Commission's proposal is that there's an extensive um uh there are extensive logging roads all over the property. So there's already sort of an incipient trail system uh which could be used probably tomorrow by some people. So again, there there are a whole lot of free things that could be done for the community really soon. And um I think that would be nice to consider. That's all.
Can I have a follow-up to either Christine or um Val? I don't know if you know any of this from from your findings. Where those are, are they um are they kind of centered in one central area? Are they all over the property?
You wander all through the property on one of Steve's map. I think on one of Steve's map on the documents, they're shown. But they go all through the property.
And in fact, we utilized those roads to get back there. Wonderful, because usually we have to like hack through and cut through, but we use those those tinsing roads quite extensively to get the equipment in and out, so good call there.
Thank you.
There's there's free news already.
Is there anybody here who would like to make comment?
Claire?
Hi, everyone. I'm Claire Kane. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, hi Claire.
I do not live in town. I represent the Connecticut Forest and Park Association, a nonprofit, and we're based in Rockfall, Connecticut. And part of our mission is to maintain the Blue Blaze Hiking Trail System, of which the Nipmuck Trail is a part. And really, I just wanted to lend my voice to the concept of passive recreation. We would certainly like to see the trail maintain its continuity through this area. Um if you're not that familiar with the Nipmuck Trail, it's a 30-mile trail that connects you know, up through, all the way up to Bigelow Hollow State Park. Really connects some incredible wild, natural places. And you know, if if for some reason the trail was fractured in this area, it it would really be um a shame. And so I just wanna lend our voice as an organization And so I just want to lend our voice as an organization to seeing this property remain in its natural state, uh, maybe with some recreational improvements, we would love to see that. So that's all I wanted to add, and, um, I appreciate you guys having this conversation and letting me add some comments.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, Mike?
I'm here too, sir. Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Mike Gantik, and I live on Oaks Road in Ashford. I'm a current member of the Ashford Economic Billings Commission, and the Art and Future Commission Committee, and a past member of the Conservation Commission. Uh, first, I want to thank the Boards of Selectmen from Wellington and Ashford for your continued, uh, efforts in pursuing this situation here in a c- cataract property. Um, I think we've heard a lot of, uh, good ideas so far. I think the property offers po- possibly a lot of, uh, opportunity for a lot of diverse uses. Um, but I think it's critically important that, uh, the towns consider what I'll call a ma- developing a master plan for the property. Um, you know, that, I think Val kind of mentioned some of the components of, of a brown seal, and I think really a site reuse assessment and land assessment is really needed to fully evaluate all the site constraints that are out there, and and maybe what sort of potential reuse of the property could be. Um, and I think, um, you know, there's a lot of things that can be factored into that. Um, and certainly a master plan would serve to provide a future roadmap for towns, I think there may be opportunities 10, 15, 20, 50 years from now, that may be a benefit to the communities for the use of that property. Obviously, we all lost some tax dollars, significant tax dollars. Um, but I think there's certainly a lot of, for the passive uses and other things being used for the property. And I think, um, you know, if you take, um, take, develop this master plan, I think it also provides an opportunity to um, position the towns for future grant monies, um, for various things, even if there's trails or the solar issues, or certainly, uh, talked about housing, development, all the things, you're going to have to have a plan in hand to show somebody when you submit for some kind of grant. Um, so I think I, I really would urge on that we consider developing this master plan, and, and that, and I believe that the Brown Field Program actually does provide grant funding for development of such a plan. Um, so I, you know, really, you know, I don't have any specific uses to say that we should do this and that, because I really think, um, there's certainly our site constraints, but I think we really have to understand how those site constraints going to fit what, what we possibly could do for best use and, and, and diverse use, of course. Um, and also be able to leverage other, other funds out there to, to, you know, develop this property over time, because I don't think it's going to happen over, obviously overnight. But, uh, I think that's critically important that we, we, you know, access to this other brown seal funding to develop a true plan, so we can fully understand what's going on, and certainly a plan that engages the public fully, so everybody gets their say and input into it, and, um, so we have some sound understanding to move forward in a, in a proactive, positive, um, understanding way of what we should use that property for, for its best use for, for both towns and the public. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to give this brief input. And good luck, everybody.
Thank you. Um, to Michael's point, can I ask, Anne, we're, we're talking about, um, kind of developing potential uses for our application for remediation. Is what Michael's suggesting a separate grant opportunity, or could it be combined with it within this application? So is it separate grant funding for brown fields for, for something like that, or could it be intertwined with the funds we, if we were to receive this grant?
I'd have to go back and look at the notice, but it's possible it would be a later round of funding. Um, I think this one's more limited to remediate remedial action funding. Uh, maybe another one, the next one that could provide for planning. Um, well, we'd have to check.
Okay, but that might make our application a little bit more attractive if we were looking at, at the master plan without a potential shovel-ready project. Val, did you?
No, I was going to say, you know, in previous rounds, we've, I've done them, we've done, they don't want you to take all the money just for planning, because they want to see remediation, but you folks are so close to the end, um, you know, it would be worth an ask. But, but they have previous this round, and exactly right. This round is a little different, but in the previous round, they've given you a certain percentage. You EPA does the very same thing. Um, EPA sometimes actually tells you, don't exceed $25,000 or something like that, but, so I think the potential's there, ask.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Michael, for the, for the suggestion. How about, well, Carl was next, I believe. Carl?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. I'm Carl Zulick. Um, I don't live in the town. But I, um, was born and raised there. I own, uh, three parcels of property there still, pay taxes. Um, I, um, was impressed with the Conservation Committee report, thanks very much. I was, um, I saw about the meeting on the Ashford Citizen and, um, decided to log in. Uh, but I have not been able to find on the web maps or really more information, so that was very helpful to me. I think there's still work to be done to analyze the site. Um, and proposing uses on a site like this. Um, a lot of it's about location. It is a portal to the town of Wellington, it's a portal to the town of Connecticut on Route 44. Um, and, um, it's got some great topography and some great natural resources there, obviously. Um, but I don't have a good understanding yet. Like I, looking at the maps, does it abut Camp Conry? Or is it some distance from Camp Conry's boundary on Route 74?
Some distance, it is some distance there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, but I do think that, um, some more site analysis would inform us better about the potential uses, you know, things like slope and archaeology, cultural resources. I, you know, Camp Conry used to be owned by my family, and there were a lot of Indian, um, graveyards and things like that there that, you know, not many people really knew about, but the state knows about them. But that information hasn't been put forward, to my knowledge. So I think, um, a little bit more on slope, um, a map on wetlands would certainly be useful, because it limits development, slope limits development, it limits roads and so forth. But I, again, I, I commend you for what you've done so far. Just hope that there's a little bit more information that's comes forth so that we can have, um, some more informed input. Um, it's a beautiful piece of property, and it's also big. I, I support the Conservation Commission's proposal. Um, I think it, there's more to it that could come out, but, uh, you know, I'm in favor of a public use. But I recognize that it's going to decrease from the tax base if it is in public use. Thank you.
Can I, thank you, Carl. Um, can I just, uh, Bill, um, I thought, uh, Kathy Demers, who's Chairman of the Wellington Conservation Commission, has joined us, and she wasn't sure, um, because she's in Vermont, if she would be able to, or have connectivity issues. So, uh, the Commission, the, the Wellington Conservation, uh, Commission had thoughts on, at, at least the Wellington parcels. Um, and not much different, which is about 41 acres in total, how that may be used. They discussed, um, and, and recommend that the town consider keeping at least the northern portion of the Wellington property as open space for passive uh, recreation to protect the Nipmuck Trail corridor, which is managed by the Connecticut Forest and Park Association, we saw, as Claire um, speaks to us, the portion of the property has some wetlands, so it is not really suited, um, for any type of extensive development. They believe the southern portion of the Wellington property closest Route 44 is more developable, but also has some farmland soils and open fields, so the town could consider leasing this portion of property to farmers, or use it for community gardens. Um, and so I'll share with the Selectmen, uh, the maps that she's shown us, which are the same, um, we've already seen. So I think what we see is some alignment between both of our Conservation Commissions and, um, in their suggestions. So I wanted to make sure I shared that.
Thank you.
Well, Jeffrey?
Thank you very much. Um, Jeff Silversmith, on 95 Secar Road, Ashford. And I just want to thank the Conservation Commission for the thought and the effort that they put into all of their, um, recommendations, and as well as thanking everyone for who came forward with, uh, their recommendations for this. I guess mine isn't so much a recommendation as it is a, uh, ditto on a number of the things, especially the uh, passive recreation and/or solar, but I guess my question comes down to, or my input comes down to, um, if for some reason, um, putting in for this grant is, does not become specific enough, or are reasons for, and what we want to do with the land are not specific enough for the grant, are ARPA funds available? I mean, if it's not broadband, which kind of gets a free pass for ARPA funds, recreation and solar energy seemed like it would have a strong secondary use, or secondary use for ARPA funds.
I believe those are eligible items, Jeff.
And while I believe they're eligible items, I'm not sure how much of, um, Ashford's ARPA funds have been committed. Wellington is down to about 200,000 roughly, of our 1.7 million, um, uncommitted, so it would certainly limit um, our abilities. But ca- can I ask Anne, so both to, to Carl, some of Carl's points and, and to Jeff's, um, can you talk to us a little bit about, you know, why we're holding this, and what we specifically are looking for in this application round? Um, and why we're asking for, um, some ideas. Again, we're looking for ideas, we do not have to have a hard con- we definitely don't have a shovel-ready project, and don't expect that to happen by, you know, next week.
Right, a- and thank you. And, and we don't anticipate, uh, for the Selectmen to come out of this meeting and say, yes, we're going to do passive recreation, or follow the conservation plans, or we're going to do master planning, or we're going to do solar, or we're going to do hunting, or any of the suggestions. The purpose of what we're doing tonight is is the purpose itself. To hear from the community, to write about in the application, what it is the towns are doing in preparation of moving forward. If in the next round, planning, funding, if it's the decision of the collective Selectmen to move forward with developing a master plan, that kind, that getting involved out of this meeting. This is, and it'll be their decision to make. And also it provides them, because we'll have, there may have to be some matching funding from the towns. So I'm not sure how your governments all work, whether that's go to the Board of Finance, and then the Selectmen, or you requested the Board of Finance, but there may be some matching funding, but this all helps to provide an informed decision. Um, so that it, so that there is a reasoned approach to what we're doing. So that's really the, the purpose. We're not looking to say, yes, this is going to be this type of development. That's not the purpose tonight. It's to hear everybody's collective ideas.
So, so we're, you know, I just want to, uh, everybody's expectation, we're not looking to come out of this with, right, with a plan. I don't think you're going to hear any of us say, we are definitely using this for this resource. It's to make our application for remediation grants the most attractive, so that we actually get the grant funding.
If, if we can, it's going to be a challenge.
That's right.
Because, because.
They want shovel-ready.
They want shovel-ready projects. You know, the, I've, um, I'm going to be part of a brownfields, um, coalition meeting next Wednesday that's being hosted in Stanford. And I'm on a panel with the D E C D and D E P people. And they're happy showing their befores and their afters. And that's their focus for the funding. Even if the after, and it's fine for an after, if ultimately that's the decision of the towns is, uh, public parks or trails, that's fine. They've got nasty before pictures, and then they'll show pretty looking trails or community gardens as their after. Or they could show affordable housing after, or whatever it is. So they want a before, and they want you to be prepared to do the after, so that two years from now, they can show the
On the website.
Pictures.
That's right.
Catherine, you had a question?
Of Anne. Anne, um, this is all very helpful, getting input from our public for both towns as to what we would like to have done, to have done with that property, or how to use it. Um, but, again, when you're filling out this application, you're, or helping to fill out this application, we have to put something in there that shows that we are moving in a direction. Can you give, maybe elaborate just a little bit more on that?
Well, it's going to be a general, I mean.
It's going to be general, but you're getting a sense.
Right, right. Where it's, it's going to be general, we can't, we can't pick any concept and say, this is what we're going to do, because we don't know already.
Yeah.
So it's going to be very general, these were the concepts that, um, you know, were discussed this evening, there's a variety of them. Our plan is going to be, let's, no pun intended, dig down and explore these options further. And see what is the best, best, um, opportunity for the towns.
And would it be including, possibly saying that we would be looking at a master plan?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
If I may, the thing is that, we know when we write grants, you know, we sometimes get hooked into what they're asking, and we, we can't hear because we don't have it. But what we've talked about is, I hope you folks understand here that the amount of money you're asking for, for remediation is just about equal to what most applicants ask for for investigations. Think about that. So that's, that's your. Listen, we just need this little bit, teeny much, just to push us over, and, yeah, we don't have a developer yet, because we're so close to being done. We'll have one, give us our money, we'll finish it, we'll do the master plan. God bless.
And, and that we're taking a reasoned approach in how we're doing it.
Right. And, and our, the difference too, this year, as opposed to prior, most prior funding rounds, we own the property now. You know, they, they, they don't, the statute somewhat prohibits, um, you from obtaining a grant to do remediation on property that you don't own.
Which is what happened when we looked last time.
But now we own the property, because it's different, because they don't want you to improve the property owner who caused the contamination or neglected to deal with the contamination. You don't, they don't want that person to benefit.
So the pitch is, look how far we've come all by ourselves.
And I also think emphasizing how close we are to the finish line.
Right.
On this thing, when it comes to remediation.
Right.
I mean, the state, the state loves to give us, uh, goals that we have to do. And a big one over the years has been, you don't own the property.
Right.
We've overcome that last year.
Right.
And, you know, I was a bit surprised when I heard that the wetlands had never been mapped.
Yeah.
And I, I think it only makes a lot of sense to put priority on doing a development plan, map our wetlands, and, and be able to recognize and point out exactly what we either have or don't have there for potential development of whatever sort we decide.
And in fact, even that, when there's an easy way to do that, because you can send somebody out there with your existing weapons map. And just say, yeah, it's pretty much this. So it could be a few days as opposed to three weeks. There's ways to, to move forward, but you want to know where you're going like Ansa, from a remediation standpoint.
On, on your, your experience with both of you, do you have any idea if we were looking at a a development plan, what we're talking about in dollars?
There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of existing information. Okay? ECO, kind of ECO, there's a lot of things that, because you're not actually developing something, you can use just to inform what you want to do. So in other words, you open up pods of areas, you don't have to have it right down to, you know, two-foot line, because you're going in for a site.
Right.
So there's a way to economize there. I have done them for six or 7,000, and I've done them for 50,000. The key here is, what are the concepts? You folks will know that, you know, people are willing to doodle till the cows come home. So you don't spend your money doodling. Spend your money on something real, you know, some kind of compatible coexistence based on what we're hearing from folks. And do two or three concepts and see if that resonates with folks.
I like your low range.
Yeah.
All right. So we, so we're doing a little bit of what we said we did, Bill, I believe, that we didn't want to do. We don't want to take up all the air in the room, we want to hear from you. So is there anyone in the room that wants to speak before we go back online? Yes, sir. And then we'll come back to you online. I see all your hands.
Yes, I'm Keith Lifter, I live on the Worth Road in Ashford. And, uh, I, you know, hear all these proposals, and I think they're great. I do believe that there's enough, uh, space there that we could do perhaps mixed use. And what I'd like to see is that perhaps maybe along the Route 44 area, that there might be some opportunity for some type of development that would generate some tax dollars, which would help with the upkeep of the property, because even if it's used for recreation, you still have to, uh, you know, provide upkeep, and there's also the liabilities that go with that. And so I would like to also see a disinterested third party come in and examine the property and tell us for certain, without any bias, pre-existing bias, either for, you know, development or recreation or any of that, tell us what, uh, what parts of the land might be suitable for development, or if it's all going to be for recreation, or some, could some of it be used for, uh, you know, low income housing or solar or what have you. So that's what I would recommend.
Thanks. Great, thank you. All right. So I'm going to go, I'm going to start with those who have not had an opportunity and then we'll circle back to anyone who's spoken again. So I'll start with Janet.
Hi, I'm Janet Bellamy. I live on Sunset Drive in Ashford. And I'd just like to point out that I'm, well, I'd like to thank all the selectmen for your work on this. But also I'd like to say, I see an over, an overarching agreement by people that the property should be used for the community, for everyone to enjoy in one way or another, whether it's passive recreation or low income housing or solar to help people with their electric bills. So I I see this as a theme and I'm very encouraged by it. And I hope that we can do that because it is just a beautiful piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Anyone else in the room? Great, I'll keep coming back. Susan? Susan Eastwood? Yes. Susan Eastwood? There you go. Oh, one more time.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having trouble with my unmute button. Thank you. This is great. All these ideas are really inspiring, really. I agree with Janet. It looks like a theme is sort of emerging. And I wanted to say that I'm the chair of the Ashford Clean Energy Task Force, as some of our members have spoken already. And thank you, John, for bringing all those details about community solar and so forth up because those are really great. And really, I think that would be a great use for us, a portion of the property, as John already said. But but I wanted to just bring a little history because a number of solar developers have approached the town in the past, even I think maybe 10 so years or more ago, because there were a lot of incentives for putting solar on brownfields. And I would have to research to see what the current situation is. But, you know, I just was always personally a little hesitant about that without, you know, looking into other options and, you know, just this one company comes forward, you know, and wants to do something. So I think I really liked Mike's idea of the master plan to see what's the best use for the land. I love the, all the conservation commission's ideas as well for the use of the town. But I just wanted to give that historical perspective and, you know, urge that we look at it from a whole community perspective, not just one developer coming in like has happened in the past. And of course, those all fell through because of the complications that we all know about. So now we don't have to deal with that, which is great. And thanks for all your work on that, everybody.
Okay. You're in the room, just wave your hand. Keep an eye on. I think absent any, first time, we'll go back to Loretta.
Okay, I just wanted to add to what Carl had said about knowing more about the land and that would be the purpose of the forest management plan, which the Yale Forest Forestry Program in Ashford would be willing to do a forest management plan. And in that, they would not only go through the lay of the land, but they would also, from other forest management plans that I've seen, they also look at the history of the land. So I think you had mentioned something like that. And the other thing is, in terms of a long-term plan, what we were thinking about, if it became a nature center, educational center, it could then become a tourist attraction, which would then help present businesses in town and also offer an opportunity for new business to come in. And then the third thing is just that the state is very interested in increasing open space. They feel that that's really important. And I know Ashford has a lot of open space, but some of it isn't permanently protected. But to take away open space might be a little problematic. So if, and certainly we could use certain parts of it, something like a solar thing would be right, I think, in line with our plan, but that by saying we want to use, conserve this land and use it for the public, I think would be very helpful in terms of the grant. Thank you again.
Thanks.
Carl?
Thanks again, Carl Zulik, Zichik Road, Jady Road, Westford Hill. I like some of the discussion and where it's going. And, you know, I guess I want to say, have a little bit of a concern. I don't live in Connecticut anymore, but I know that I pay taxes there and the taxes are very high in Connecticut, if you're not aware of it, I think you are. And
Only slightly aware.
Right. And so, you know, that is, that is a concern to town residents. I am a conservationist at heart, so I think if there was any possibility that you could look at a multiple use kind of development plan where you had maybe something in there for housing, maybe something in there for commercial and then a lot of open space, recreation, trails, fishing, you know, or whatever other things that the that the site would allow, might be, might be worth pursuing and might play well with the state. So kind of in in my line of work, we call that multiple use. I also would point out that you've got a resource there to help you with development plans and site analysis. G I S at the University of Connecticut, they've got a big department and I'm pretty sure you could find folks there that would do some G I S maps of of slope and topography and aspect for solar studies and and all of those kinds of things would be very quick using their G I S capabilities. And anyway, those are, those are a couple of other thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I promise you, there are some Wellington folks participating and I know they're listening, although we may not hear from as many of them, but we have 41 with a 300 acre, so. And again, this, all of this discussion does not narrow our focus to this is what we're going to do. We're not committing to actual use, even in this application. It's to, you know, have some concepts and ideas the selectmen can determine that we'll use in our narrative to hopefully achieve the grant. So.
Is there any more people? Is there another page?
There is another page, but if you raise your hand, it brings you to the front of that. So if they raise their hands, so Kelsey, can you just kind of scroll through the pages that are there just in the event someone doesn't know how to use those tabs and is waving frantically at us? Most people aren't on the
I'm on a dial-in phone, so I can't raise my hand, but I'd like to say something.
Okay, I'll just ask you to identify yourself for the record.
My name is John Kopek, North Road in Ashford. I think that's the last speaker that pretty much took the wind out of my sails there. I don't want to make everyone happy. I want to make everybody reasonably happy. So I think mixed use is the way to go. I think absolutely some sort of development to the south and to the northeast and preservation of the wetlands. Do trails in there, whatever, doesn't really matter. But certainly something with business because taxes are getting out of hand. Mine went up 20% this year alone. And just putting residential housing in there isn't going to help that situation all that much. So any kind of commercial or light industrial use somewhere on that property, I think would really help the taxpayers out in addition to still having plenty of land to preserve for the Nittman Trail and the wetlands and all that stuff. The solar panels. I'm just afraid that turns it into a brownfield again because those things are not recyclable yet and they're full of toxic materials. So, you know, just, there's something to think about, but definitely mixed use so that everybody can have some degree of happiness out of whatever happens to that property. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Is there anyone else who's just on a phone? You don't have the ability to raise your hand like those who are working from a computer. You should be able to unmute yourself. So we'll go to someone else. And if that's the case, when they've done speaking, I encourage you to poller out while we monitor that. So I'll go back. Anyone in the room? Okay. Christine, I believe you are next.
Uh, yeah, so I just want to reiterate about, Loretta had talked to the Yale Forest people and they are willing to do a forest survey free, free, F R E E.
And we like those words.
They do an amazing job. We had it done on on my land and John Siebel's land. And they, they look at the geology, they look at the history, they look at the kinds of trees, the kinds of everything on the land. It's really quite an amazing report, free. So that would be a really nice place to start. And also, I I fully agree with mixed use down the line, but that is going to take some development plan, which I think is also very important. It just seems to me when we talk about this upcoming grant, I've heard it said they want to see something shovel ready or they want to see a kind of a plan going forward. I think if you start with passive recreation, which doesn't change the land and
I'm sorry, go ahead, Christine. Oh, you're muted. You muted yourself.
I'm sorry. So you start with passive recreation and you outline that as the conservation commission has sort of done. And you say, okay, so that's a starting place. We also then go to, we're working on a development plan with some group or whatever, whatever, to see what goes on next. But I think then you have a pathway that is sort of obvious and and gives a direction which I would think a grant, grant agency would like to see. So.
Thank you. All right. So Steve, we'll come back to you. I think we heard from you earlier. So I'm going to start with, is it Brandon? My reading now. Let's put these glasses on. Brandon?
And let me, I
I hope I said that right.
One second. Be on mute. Mute, please.
You're unmuted. You're unmuted.
Good. I live right next door to the
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Okay, Brenda Sandrata, and I live on Squawho Road, right adjacent to the property. And in the past, have done studies of the property for one of the owners in the past wanted to make a golf course out of the property. And it was denied because an aquifer that provides the water for Willimantic goes right under the property and would have been polluted. So I hope this care taken in deciding what mixed use is made back there because it's, you don't want to pollute all the water. And you can't, they won't, they'll refuse it, I'm sure. The Water Commission, I would think, would refuse it. That's my concern.
Thank you so much. All right, Steve.
Yes, I just wanted to
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, sure. Steve Maritko, Varga Road, Ashford. One further constraint on developing the property is access. Access to the property is really limited to Route 44, the open town-owned parcels on Route 44, which by the way have, oh, I think there are probably a little under 10 houses along Route 44 and the end of Karosi Road 2, which is a very quiet road. And you'd have to cross over a stream there. Those are really the only access points. There's no, no access in the north or the west. And in the east again is only, only off of Karosi Road. That's all.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone here in the room? Anyone online who wants to speak again? If you're on a phone only, you can unmute yourself kind of while we're out. So what I will say is the the selectmen, you know, plan to to hold a special meeting so that we can talk about the things that were talked about in this meeting to kind of come to a consensus of what that narrative use will look like in our grant application. And then I think I speak for Bill myself, we anticipate multiple, multiple meetings as far as use goes. Again, this isn't a, whatever everyone says tonight is what we're doing. We have lots of conversation to have and lots of public conversation with your input as to what we use. But I did love the, look, I love free. I think everyone here loves anything we can get that's beneficial to our communities for free. As Christine pointed out, if the Yale Forest, you know, is willing to do a management plan, that might be something because we own the properties that as selectmen we can, you know, potentially move forward with. Because there's no costs, we're not waiting for any funding for that. So yeah, I would anticipate at our selectmen's meeting here, some conversation or at least some suggestions for myself that we try to move forward with some of those things, working with our conservation commissions. So Christine, thanks for pointing the free portion out. Carl, you had your hand up again. I seem to have just put it down. Oh, you're back up.
I just, a lot of the organizations I work with don't consider adequately the long-term costs of public uses. And I would just remind everybody, when you build trails, when you build any hardscapes or buildings or anything like that, there's maintenance costs, winter, summer, erosion, lawn mowing. Even with community gardens, there will be costs. And that's part of my thinking about the multiple use is if you have some form in your proposal where you can identify a way to offset those long-term costs, whether they be a trust or asking for money from the state that would go into a a trust for long-term maintenance of the site that you end up developing. But anyway, don't, don't forget about those, those long-term costs when you develop. Thank you.
Anyone in the room?
I'd just like to echo what Eric is saying. Although with our predecessors have been working on this for years and many of us involved, this is sort of the beginning of the latest phase to get this remediation done. The light is at the end of the tunnel. We'll now go into the planning stages. Add it. This won't be the last of our public hearings. We do have a special selectmen's meeting that will be coordinated with Wellington. Prior to our application process, we're working on that. When that does happen, it will be both in person and on Zoom. So if you're interested in joining in and listening in on that, you're welcome to do that. We just have not been able to focus in on a specific time that they do. But thank you all for your, your input. It's important to us. We're listening to you. And stay involved.
And I would say for residents online and in the room who are here tonight and those who might be listening to this and watching it back, this was the first of what I said will be potentially more in many public hearings. But that doesn't mean you have to wait for a public hearing to shoot your ideas over to either Selectmen's Office in Ashford or the Selectmen's Office in Wellington. We're always, my door is always open to hear those suggestions. We compile them and can bring them into future conversations. So if anyone has anything beyond tonight, I encourage you to, you know, send it. I know if I don't write it down when I'm talking about it, I won't remember it. And we're welcome to hear that outside of the public hearing.
All right. I believe that our agenda has been complete and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Ashford Board of Selectmen's. So moved. Is there a second? All in favor, seeing if I'm saying aye?
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Wellington Selectmen's Meeting.
So moved.
Move Selectmen Builic, is there a second? I don't know that I still see Liza, so I will second that. It's a non-debatable matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all again. Enjoy your evening and this video will be posted in whatever manner both towns post their meetings.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. Christine, and I should have publicly done this.